Was the body camera, so he wants to provide an update with, for council on the body cameras. We also have tonight, after council interest, we have an update with 161 Granby, which was requested after the last council session. Brian is in Richmond, but he's going to give us an update from the general assembly session. And then, lastly, I have a media update for you, which I'm required to give to you each February. And as time permits, if we run out of time, that update is in your packet. Okay?
Good evening. Happy to announce that the Norfolk Police Department has now entered the world of body worn cameras with our police department. We've got a short video to show you.
My name is Timothy Bedoin. I'm a police officer with the Norfolk Police Department, currently assigned to the technology support unit. Today, I'm going to be equipping Mr. Hudson with a body worn camera. The model that Norfolk Police Department uses currently is the Taser Axon Flex, which has three components. The three components, the battery pack, the cable, and the actual camera itself. The camera is a full HD camera with an internal memory of eight gigabytes, and it has a 75-degree viewing angle. It has a current record time of approximately 10 hours at our current setting, and a battery life of approximately 12 hours. Take the cable, attach it to the battery pack, attach the other end to the actual camera itself. First piece I'm going to put on is the battery pack. Typically, the officers are issued a holster with this component. They can either clip it to their gun belts, their shirts. We're even directing them to put it in their pocket, or some of them replacing it inside their body armor for easier access. Currently, Norfolk Police Department has two mounting options. One is the lowrider headband, and the second is the collar mount. I'm going to go ahead and demonstrate the lowrider headband first. The camera clicks into a key slot that's on the lowrider headband, and this will fit on top of his ears, going behind his head. Next mounting option, as I mentioned before, will be the collar mount. This is actually a preferred mount by our patrol units. There's three pieces to it. There's two magnets and a metal collar. Bracket or the metal collar part actually goes underneath the collar, along the middle part or along the carotid artery of the neck. The collar actually covers up this bracket, and then we take two magnets and place them onto the collar. And then the officer will place the camera and attach it to the magnet, just as with the lowrider headband, and then angle the camera for his optimal viewing.
What's also neat about these body worn cameras is there's an app capability to, for me to be able to log in and to actually streamline live what my camera is seeing. As you can see, it's actually focused on Officer Timothy Bedoin right now. This app allows me to be able to adjust the camera as needed, in case it goes down or up. We want to have the optimal level where we can see everybody. It also allows me to be able to take the camera off and actually point it in a different direction to see actually around corners, or up in an attic space, or underneath cars or beds, so we don't have to actually put our heads down there. It allows us to be able to remotely see what we're seeing without being able to put ourselves in any danger.
So as of Monday afternoon, we have 300 of these devices deployed within our police department. We issued a special order to govern the procedures of how it's going to be used. We did a very aggressive training schedule. We were able to get everybody trained within a week to get the 300 out there. Our plan is to continue to deploy these devices until we've covered every uniform patrol officer in our department. We're trying to get that done by FY16. We're looking at different funding choices. Some of this may come through a grant, but we're exploring every option that we can to get these devices out. One of the things that we're able to do with these is we can take a look at an event, take a look at the body camera. It allows us to debrief. It also allows us to pick up things that we might need to train on. So if we see somebody that's not doing something exactly correct, or something that needs to be adjusted, we can pull them back in, show them the video, and say, hey, you know, we need to adjust this way. And it really provides some great feedback for our officers. Some of the uses, obviously, to record citizen contact during our self-initiated, to dispatch calls for service. We will notify the citizens when we are recording, so they know that they are on camera. We don't want to be doing anything surreptitiously. They will be notified, you know, except unless we have an exigent circumstances that cause us not to be able to, we will notify our citizens that we have the camera deployed in record mode. If we go into a private home...
What if they say, "I don't want to be recorded"?
Yeah, that's something that we are still working on, quite frankly. And this is a big experiment with police departments across the nation dealing with privacy rights. So we've done the research. We're trying to make sure that we, our policies are in line with what other departments are doing. I believe in Virginia that we can, as long as we're out in public, there's no expectation of privacy, we can record. When we go into somebody's home, depending on what's happening in the home, the homeowner may be able to tell us to turn them off. And if it's just in the routine, normal police work, then we will comply with that request and turn the camera off. Now, if something develops into the, in the house that causes us to have to make an arrest, we will, we will then turn the camera back on, so we can record whatever happens in there. We will not use this for covert surveillance. We want to be clear that this is a law enforcement tool, not to be used in a way that is not fitting with what we want it to do. We want to, as much as we can, protect everybody's privacy in doing this.
Does the public setting include a routine, well, a routine police stop?
Yes, ma'am. On a public roadway, outside on the street, it's, our instruction is that an officer comes in contact at one of those venues to turn the camera on to record.
How did you prioritize the 300 that would be given cameras?
We looked at where the majority of our citizen police contacts occur, and that's in our Uniform Patrol Division. So that's what we're trying to cover first. The camera capabilities, it captures whatever's in the camera view, and you heard Officer Bedoin talk about, 75 degrees of coverage with the camera. It records the audio. It records audio of the officers, audio of the citizen. We'll get evidence out of this that we can use in investigations. It can also help us in testimony in court, to make sure we're testifying correctly to what actually happened in court. If it goes like it's gone in other police departments, we should see a reduction in complaints. As I've said before, in my community forums, when I talk with people about body cameras, everybody seems to get a little bit more polite when they know they're being videoed. That includes the police, it also includes the citizens. So if it works like it has in other jurisdictions, we should see a reduction in citizen complaints based on this. Some of that will be because the officers have modified their behavior. Some of it will be because the citizens have modified their behavior, based on being in the camera. Now, some of the things I think we need to talk about are limitations, so everybody doesn't get an unreal expectation with this. It's a camera, so it doesn't capture everything that the officer sees. It's a two-dimensional view, and as I said before, it only gets 75 degrees of the action wherever the camera's pointing. It does not track the officer's eyes. So if the camera's sitting on the shoulder, and the officer's looking in a different direction, the camera's not going to see what the officer's seeing. So what you may see is the officer all of a sudden turn and take action, and the camera's not going to pick up what precipitated that. So there needs to be some understanding of that, and the officer will have to explain what was going on that caused them to go in the other direction. The other thing it does, it doesn't pick up sensory cues that the officer will feel in dealing with somebody. So if I make an arrest and I put somebody in a position to do a search incidental to the arrest, and that person tenses up, that's generally an indication that they're either going to try to run away, or fight with me, or something that's not in the normal line of business. So the officer's going to react to that, and people who are looking at this through a body camera are not going to know why. But that's why, is because the officer's felt something that the camera's not going to pick up. So that's something else that needs to be thought about. It doesn't capture the same speed of life. You know, you'll have to look at this thing over and over again. The officers, you know, we, our eyes are the best they are. They'll pick up things that even the camera won't, based on our experience. May not provide all the information. As I said before, the camera, as good as they are, have a limited range of view. So the officer may be reacting to something that's off-camera that the camera doesn't see, and then, again, it will be up to the officer to explain that. What we're trying to do, when we talk about purging legitimacy, this is what we're trying to accomplish with the cameras. Maintain community trust and officer accountability, because everybody knows that everybody's watching these things. It is hoped that it will improve positive interactions between law enforcement and the community. Again, going to that piece about behavior. Changing the behavior of the officers, changing the behavior of the citizens as we get out in public with these things. It also provides some transparency as to what's going on. We will, and hopefully, in a lot of events, have a video record of what's happened, and be able to go back to that to see what actually took place. We talked before about the training opportunities. We review the camera footage. We see something that needs to be adjusted. We've got that information there that we can go back and take a look.
How long will it take to get that back?
90 days. If they're not attached to some criminal case, or some complaint, an internal investigation, we will archive it for 90 days, then it will be automatically purged.
Mike, if you could explain to us, at the end of shift, what does the officer do to be able to archive what has just been recorded for the, for the so many hours he was on?
One of the reasons for the delay in us giving cameras out there was we had some infrastructure we had to build in our patrol divisions. And what happens at the end of the shift is the officer takes the camera off, and he plugs it into a slot. The slot automatically hooks to the internet. It downloads all the video that the officer's recorded. It goes off-site to a place called Evidence.com, and it's stored in a secure area, cloud, you know, secured cloud that Taser maintains until we need it, or we can review it. Or 90 days have passed, and then it gets purged.
Have you met with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office on this, and discussed with them retrieval of information? Let's say that an arrest has occurred. Oftentimes, we have exculpatory evidence that a defense attorney is looking for, that they want this information. As you said, people act differently on camera, officers, citizens do. And oftentimes, it benefits, more times than not, I've seen it benefits the citizen who may be accused of a crime. Is there any way that we know to get back to that, the Commonwealth Attorney's familiar with it, that if we need that information, he can get it? And we also, or he, in second, secondly, there's a, you will have cases that involve no Commonwealth Attorney at all, it's just the officer. And is there a procedure, because I can't get discovery from a police officer. I need to go to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Commonwealth Attorney doesn't prosecute all misdemeanors. But if I need that, what's the procedure, if we've figured this out, that, one, to go through the Commonwealth Attorney, they know how to get it? Or, two, I need information that only the officer knows. I can't track him down, or is there some office I can go to to say, Officer Smith had an arrest on a particular day. It involved this defendant. I need you to produce it for me for discovery purposes, or for what may be exculpatory evidence. Can you answer those two? And you may not have an answer to the latter, I'd be surprised.
We are, we are currently working with the city attorney and the Commonwealth Attorney to get those procedures ironed out. We felt like it was important to get the cameras out there. So we have put it out there while we're still working through some of this process. Some of the thoughts that we have is either we will burn a DVD that we can give to people with the evidence on it, or we can give the attorneys their own Evidence.com account, so they can log in and take a look on their own. Because it's a web-based program. You know, if they've got something in particular that they're looking for from an officer that's been archived, they can certainly get the information, log in through their account, and be able to retrieve whatever they need, either in reference to your asking for discovery or something they need for court.
And how, how long will the cameras last?
We, the beauty of this is, we have signed a five-year agreement with Taser. So within that five-year agreement, any new upgrades we automatically get for no, for no charge. So we have somewhat paid for the cost upfront.
So the life expectancy of the camera is...
Is, just like any technology, until the next new one comes out. So whenever they get, if they develop new technology, we will get the new camera there. They're under warranty.
So it's theoretically five years?
Theoretically, five years, exactly.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said you guys are keeping these for 90 days, and most of our records, if I'm not mistaken, are either, like, required on a three-year basis, or a seven-year basis, or something or another like that. How does a 90-day rule compare with the three-year? We've got to keep stuff, current year and previous three, for like, foible, things like that. How does, how does that work? I don't know.
You're right. We will have to, the General Assembly is delegated to the Virginia Library of Records to promulgate tables for timeframes. This will have to be in compliance with, with that. And so that, I don't know the answer to what the Library of Virginia is required for records recorded by police cameras. But it will have to be in compliance with that.
So we're not going to delete anything in the next 90 days until we know what we're supposed to be keeping, and for how long we're supposed to be keeping it, right?
Unless we know that that is the right, right amount of time.
Mike, one of the things, let me just give you a heads up. One of the things that could happen is, you have a misdemeanor prosecuted only by a police officer. Classic, what we always did in courtroom five or six, that doesn't have a Commonwealth Attorney. Case gets set out, some, clients arraigned. After a period of time, it finally comes up. It's past the 90 days. Wasn't anything, and a lawyer steps in, says, hey, where's the, how do I know there's a camera? Be prepared, there's going to be another continuance request for production of that discovery. So you'll have an arraignment. Somebody will come to court. Lawyer comes in the first time, because he can't get discovered from the officer. He's going to ask for that. He's going to say, they're going to say, "We did have a camera on that day. I'm going to ask to be entitled to it, because it could have discovered..." Well, not necessarily discoverable evidence, but exculpatory evidence. And then there's going to be another continuance, so I can get that. Be prepared that that 90 days could run. There's got to be a way, perhaps, and it's just as a heads up. Just start thinking that through, that we don't lose, because sometimes cases get put off, and by the time a lawyer gets involved, can even figure out that there would be exculpatory evidence, because it's not always discoverable. Can figure out it's exculpatory evidence, that, that it gets produced or it gets saved. I think 90 days is standard. I think that's what Chesapeake does. If you talk to them...
Yes, sir.
And, and they, they do a great job. But you also, we've got to be careful. We don't lose it, and the next thing we know is you have a defense attorney coming in saying, "They had a body camera. Where is it? I don't see it." And of course, in the age of CSI, juries often will expect you to maintain those things. So just, it's something to think about, just be careful.
Yes, sir. We will certainly take a look at those issues. And you're right, the storage is an issue. I think there was some legislation that was proposed, that we had to dump this in seven days.
And it's not going to work.
That's, and that's, you know, we went back to our association to talk about, that that just was unrealistic. So, professional standards, are there any more questions about body cameras before I move to the next? One of the new initiatives we've got is we are working on developing a professional standards annual report. What this is, is will be a compilation of statistics in reference to the number of complaints and administrative investigations that the police department does internally. The idea being is that we will be able to publish this report for consumption by the residents of the city, by council, by others, to take a look at the number of complaints that's come in, what we substantiated, what we haven't substantiated, the type of discipline that we've taken. Now, we won't name any of the officers involved, because the personnel rules are in place. But the idea behind this is, is to give the residents a view into what our officer professional standards does, and, and show that we investigate every complaint and act on the violations that we find, with discipline or some other corrective action, be it retraining, counseling, any of that. We'll list how the cases are closed. We'll define the terms, substantiated versus unsubstantiated, exonerated, that type of, that verbiage. We'll list the discipline administered, and it will contain, it will not contain any identifying information about the officers, as I've stated before. What we want to do is show that the police department is looking at this stuff, that when you bring a complaint to us, we act on every complaint. It is assigned a number, it is assigned investigator. We take care of it. We look at it, we do the investigation, and then something happens. Either the officer is exonerated, or substantiated, and we have to take corrective action with the officer. And, you know, it'll, it'll talk about that process. So it'll be very clear that when you make a complaint, this is what's going to happen. This is what you can expect. Here's how we're going to notify you. And then there'll be a bunch of statistics behind it, on this is what we've done over the past year.
That's great. Good, Mike. Good change. Okay? Any questions? Very proud of your achievement.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll take it, Marcus. Thank you.
Okay, we've got about 45 minutes here to get through at least three or four items here. If they're glad to hold council interest to the end, unless you, why don't we do that, Marcus? Let's get to this, unless you've got something you really want to say. Let's go to 161 Granby Street, because that's been an issue.
So Mayor, Members of Council, again, this issue came up at the last formal session, and we made a commitment to come back to you today to give you an update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. I'm going to give you a really, really quick thumbnail of where we are. And then Mr. Preet Rashi with U.S. Development is here to answer any questions that you may have. As you all know, 161 Granby, or the Leaning Tower Granby, or the Savoy, it's been called, those various names, has been on our radar for quite a few years. The city was in enforcement action with the previous owner over failure to keep the building secured, and failure to protect the public, and so forth. We, subsequently, the property has been sold to U.S. Development, and the city has required that U.S. Development submit complete plans. They have submitted plans to us. The big issue from our perspective is the building exterior. That is where there is a true public safety issue, from our perspective. The, the concerns are that there are problems with the parapet wall. There, the lentils, which are the things over top and underneath windows, are deteriorating, as well as the masonry, and the mortar between the masonry has deteriorated. This means that things, pieces can fall off the building, sidewalks down below. And so consequently, there has been scaffolding placed. Originally, scaffolding was placed at the city's direction, down at the first floor level only. More recently, the city has worked with U.S. Development to extend the scaffolding up to take in the entire facade of the building that is above a sidewalk. The city's contracted engineer has stipulated repeatedly that the building is in no danger of falling. The, they have measured and kept measurements on the building and its lean during the entire time that the pilings have been, having been driven for the main. And there has been absolutely no change whatsoever in the, the lean of the building during that period of time. There is only one building permit that has been issued at this time, and that is for interior demolition. The city worked with the developer to make sure that they got a building permit, which they needed to trigger a number of the things that are, that they are working on. This is a complicated financing package that involves historic tax credits, as well as tax abatement. And all these things had to happen in exactly the right order, in order for it to occur. There are other permits needed. We have received preliminary plans. There are comments that, that were, that need to be addressed, and that those have been sent back to the developer and their architect. At this point, Mr. Preet Rashi is probably a lot better able to answer questions about what their process is, and what they think, how quickly things are going to move. And if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Preet Rashi to come up and answer any questions.
The podium is yours, sir.
I have no formal presentation. I was just here indirectly to answer your questions after Mr. Homewood's presentation. So, yeah.
I take it you're from out of town?
I'm from Columbia, South Carolina. Yes, sir.
Who's your agent or contact here that is responsible for this building?
Who's responsible for the building here?
In town. Who's your agent?
You mean the city liaison person, or...
Your employee.
Oh, we have no full-time employee here in Norfolk, but we have people that represent us here. For, as our architect, it's Timeoff Moss. Our historic preservation person is Paige Pollard. Our general contractor will now be Vertexco, Don Adams. Our liaison with the city has been Ishan Mohat. And so we have people that we use here in Norfolk all the time, if that's what you mean. We don't have a full-time employee here, if that's what you mean.
So if we need to talk to you, we would have to talk to one of those agents?
I'm sorry?
In town. If we needed to talk to you, we would need to talk to one of those agents. Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
The, the look of the building appears, it's leaning, it appears dangerous. People are concerned that it leans. It's leaned for many years, I understand that.
Since 1908.
Are you prepared to assume the responsibility, should that building go over?
Yes. We've had plenty of structural studies on the building that show that it's completely stable.
So we should not worry?
You should not worry about the stability of the building at all, is what the structural people say.
Okay. Now, when are you going to finish it?
12 months after we started. We are working with VCC as a construction lender, and VHDA as a permanent takeout lender. The mayor has helped us by giving us letters, because while we were addressing those safety issues over the last year and a half, with some surprises, that we've had to extend both loans, and that's in process right now.
So when do you expect, right now, when is the, when do you expect to get an occupancy permit?
I'm sorry?
When do you expect to get an occupancy permit?
We have a building permit.
An occupancy permit?
Will be, as I say, 12 months after we start.
When are we going to start?
We think that if everything falls in place, if VHDA swings the bat, and VCC swings the bat, that we could start in 30 to 60 days.
From today?
I'm sorry?
From today?
Yeah.
All right, so we're looking at, so we can assure our citizens that that building should be occupied 14 months to 15 months out, from today?
As long as the financing falls in place, yes, sir.
Okay, and if the financing does not fall in place, what's the next step?
Well, we will keep persevering until we get the financing. We have a lot of money invested in this, and we will persevere to get the financing. But we have both of these lenders, I need to clarify that. Both of these lenders had commitments. We are looking to extend those commitments, because they expired. And with the mayor's help, I believe we'll be successful. He wrote a very, very strong letter to both lenders.
The Greek government's trying to do that in Europe, too. So we'll see how that works out. But we do need you to finish this building and get it done.
I get that. And we want, believe me, we are committed, and we've spent a fortune on this thing.
What's going to be inside it? Offices or residences?
No, no, sir. The first floor will be a retailer, and the rest of them will be market-rate apartments.
And even with the lean that's in that building, you expect that you'll be able to market those apartments at market rate?
Yeah, the lean within any one apartment is small. When you, we have a center hall, and so the primary lean is across that building. And so when you go inside of any one apartment, it's almost unnoticedable.
I'm concerned about the danger of the lean in the building and the condition it's in.
Well, if, I wish that you would read all the engineering reports. That's never been the concern of any professional structural engineer who has looked at the building. There's no evidence that since it moved in 1908, that it has moved at all since. Not any evidence at all. And the, we've had pile studies. I mean, we've spent a lot of money on engineering, and would not have closed on the building if we thought that, that the lean was a possible source of failure.
Thanks, Paul. Anything?
Do we, you know, are concerned, and I appreciate very much that you all are trying to preserve this building. This building is important for our downtown. But you also have to understand that we have a great deal of frustration, because we have watched this building be dormant, scaffolded. We keep hearing over and over and over again about extensions. And is there any kind of reassurance you could give us on dates, on when this will be done? Or is this...
I wish that it was just all...
I mean, very frankly, sir, you know, with what happened with us with the Union Mission, there was certainly some loss of credibility and/or confidence in whether or not you all would be able to finish. We would love to have you finish, but I don't want you back here next year telling us the same thing. I'm sure you don't either. Is there any kind of reassurance you can give us of a time commitment here?
I wish that I could speak for the lenders and say, yes, for sure. And the underwriting requirements anymore are very difficult, and people... We're represented by... requirements anymore are very difficult, and people, we're represented by a local contact. It's president of the commercial for the town bank here, and that's David Bailey, who is our representative for VHDA. And he's helping us through that underwriting process of trying to get it extended. We thought that it was going to be like that, and they're backlogged. And so I, I wish that, when I started in real estate development many years ago, you tied up a property and you did it, and you didn't worry about it. Now it becomes increasingly complex, and unfortunately, there's parts of the process that you can't control the timeframe. If you're frustrated, you can imagine how frustrated we would be. If you have several hours someday, I will tell you all the hurdles of the Rockefeller, if you will, but I will tell you also that the person that was going to build it, the general contractor is doing it for the builder that, or the developers proceeding. The architect that took over, that we're now using on the Savoy is the same architect that is doing it for them. Paige Pollard is the same preservation specialist on both. We used her first. We have a good team, and we are experienced. I've been involved in seventy-five projects in New Jersey, New York State, Florida, South Carolina, North Carolina, and Virginia. I will say that the Rockefeller was the most frustrating project I've ever been involved in my life, and we lost a lot of money on it, a lot of money. But we're committed to do this. We are, that's our wheelhouse, is downtown historic preservation, market-rate apartments, where we open up the market by bringing the price point down. And that's our vision, that's our method of doing business. We're doing, I guess we're doing, well, we're involved in ten buildings in Columbia, doing the same very, very same thing. Some of them, we've met frustration along the way, but we don't give up.
If, if, let's assume that your financing doesn't work out the way you wish it will. That's, that's a possibility. If it does not, and what is your next step?
Find another lender.
To still pursue, and I take it your financing is a special type of financing that gives you tax incentives? What is the?
No, no.
Explain your financing that makes it so special.
The tax credit equity, if you will, is a separate matter. These are stored tax credits, and there's about two and a half million dollars worth of the sale of tax credits to companies that buy those, and that becomes into the project as an infusion. That's what makes a project like that economic to do, and that's why we can bring the price point down, that plus small apartments. So we're really aiming at the downtown worker who can't afford to live downtown normally. And the tax credits is separate from the lending.
Well, I can, I, but let's go back again, and I appreciate that, but let's go back again to the fact that if you cannot get financing, if no bank is going to give you the financing.
Both of these lenders already financed the deal. One of them has about 1.65 million into the building already. That's a construction lender. So the likelihood that we would have to find another lender is the VHDA would not extend a permanent that they already had given us.
So it sounds like you can make this happen.
And we've put it, I'm sorry?
Sounds like you can make this happen.
Yes.
All right, let's get it done.
Thank you.
You know David Bailey?
I'm sorry?
Andy, he's very, he's very good at what he does.
Let's make it happen. Let's get it done. We waited a long time, and we appreciate you coming, but I understand our frustration, our citizens' frustration, the council's frustration, owners in that area's frustration. You got to get it done.
And the developers' frustration.
Well, it's your pocketbook, but you got to make this happen. If not, we're going to, we've got other issues we have to deal with, but you got to get this done.
I hear you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Tom. I just want to, you know, appreciate you coming, but we're, this council, this has been going on for years, okay? And we, we have to see some progress with this building. It sits right on a very prominent corner in our downtown, and I don't want to belabor the matter, it's been well said, but, I mean, thank goodness that we can maintain this building. We're all for you. If we weren't, we would have acted long down.
One thing positive is in the nine years that I've been working with this, the lean hasn't increased, so that's a good sign. We have stability.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Good Mr. Pennington. Hey, Brian.
Andy.
Brian, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think we're just about ready to go. Okay, whoa. Come back. Okay, Brian. All right, we're ready. Okay.
That was a dare. A dare to.
Wait. Turn it up.
We can't hear you.
Wait a minute, we need a little volume, Brian. No.
Frank, can I hear you?
All right. Go right now. Okay. Thank you. Council. Here at Richmond, it's now a crossover at the General Assembly, which means that we're at the halfway point of the 2015 session. It also means that legislation that's eligible to pass this session now has to have passed one of the respective chambers. As you know, council, Norfolk's been working very diligently in a larger statewide coalition to advance several of our established priorities for the 2015 session. To just briefly explain some of those, we have, this session as a city, asked for the General Assembly to continue to implement the interim recommendations of the Joint General Assembly Study Committee on Recurrent Statewide Flooding. I'm happy to report that several of those bills that were introduced have been advanced successfully, including a real estate transaction bill that we hope will level the playing field as far as providing additional information to both buyers and sellers as far as what the flood, what the flood impact potentially could be for a given address. We're also working to enhance urban transportation and mobility options. I would point to the Governor's Omnibus Transportation Bill, that's HB 1887 Jones. Now, there are additional monies that are available to the Hampton Roads region, the different regions, but it also incorporates an additional forty million dollars for transit funding, which is desperately needed. On this same topic, Norfolk pursued special legislation this year to give us authority to apply unused urban allocation funds on the military highway intersection project, and we've got that bill out of the Senate unanimously. That was Senator Wagner that's carried that bill, and now it's on the way to the House to be considered. So that looks pretty good. We also have been working in these larger coalitions to hold, to the extent possible, the city of Norfolk and public schools harmless from additional cuts, and to work to meaningfully enhance state public education and accreditation improvement support. And there are several bills that have been advanced that accomplish those goals, as well as amendments that were introduced by many of the members within our own delegation, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a few minutes. We also were hoping that the Joint Legislative Auto Review Committee could conduct an update study of transportation funding provisions. It doesn't look like we're going to be successful in accomplishing that this year. However, if you notice in the paper, there was some discussion about a study to look at ways to go about subsidizing the tolls on the midtown, downtown tunnel, so we're hopeful that that will favorably be received now at the, in the House. We've also asked for the Commonwealth to provide some clarification regarding urban street maintenance payments, specifically as council has been diligent to bring forward concepts for bike trails. We wanted to make sure that there was no misunderstanding as far as trying to allocate portions of these roadways to be used for other purposes other than just motor vehicles. And so, so far, we're looking pretty good with HB 1402 La Posse, the Better Comp, is that called. We also asked the Commonwealth to please consider creating a bicycle and pedestrian trail construction and maintenance funding source. Doesn't look like that is going to happen this year, at least from my read now, but we will continue to pursue in that direction. There were several legislative bills and budget amendments that the council had prioritized. One was to preserve red light camera authority. Again, council, this seems to be an authority that was given to, to cities that opted to utilize red light cameras as a deterrent in some of these high-impact, high-frequency crash rates like we have, but every single year since implementation, we found ourselves in a situation with Virginia Beach and several other Northern Virginia localities, as well as Chesapeake, defending red light camera authority. So, so far, looks like we will continue to be able to have the authority to operate these cameras in the city an additional year. We also prioritized as a city veterans' workforce integration and homelessness, and I'm happy to report that there is an omnibus package of veteran-related bills that get at those types of services that we were hoping to enhance for veterans, especially those that are returning from active duty, and it looks like Norfolk stands to be in good position to take full advantage of these different programs that are coming online. Additionally, we again asked the General Assembly to consider providing a local option to regulate these plastic retail bags. We had about three different legislative bills that were introduced on our behalf with Senator Lewis carrying one of the bills, Senator McWaters carried a bill, and then also Senator Even from up in Northern Virginia. The only bill that remains in play is actually Senator McWaters' bill, and this is a little bit different of a bill because it's an all-or-nothing type of a local option, meaning if the locality chose to not allow retail bags except for special circumstances like packing meat or alcohol, or these, there's a, there's a list of different items that were excluded, that no plastic bags would be allowed in the locality. So we don't have an exact guess as to how this is going to fare over in the House. If I was to handicap, I would say we have tall odds of it passing, so for those citizens that are particularly interested in this particular legislation, I would encourage them to please reach out to House members as they consider for this remaining portion of the session. The last bill that I wanted to bring to your attention, council, is that we again asked the General Assembly to entirely strike the Opportunity Education Institute. Senator John Miller introduced SB 821, and that did pass the Senate, and that would effectively strike from the Code of Virginia any reference to Opportunity Education Institute. Now, in the interest of time, I'll plan to quickly review over the next six or seven minutes, a few highlights of amendments or related legislation that's passed and is now being considered by the other chamber. This is not an all-inclusive list, but I also wanted to let council know that I've got a few minutes planned at the end of the, the presentation to answer any questions council might have. First topic is economic development. Both the House and Senate Money Committees proposed amendments to reverse actions taken by Governor McAuliffe to impose higher fees for weights and measures, as well as increases in food inspection fees. This will cost this proversion of $900,000 in FY '16, and also both Money Committees defeated the Governor's Homelessness Initiative dealing with rapid rehousing. This also freed up another $500,000 for next fiscal year. Both committees eliminated 1.2 million that Governor proposed to support the Virginia Coalfield Economic Development Authority. The House Appropriations Committee supported the Governor's request for an additional 20.7 million for the Governor's Development Opportunity Fund. The Senate's Finance Committee proposed to cut the fund by 4.4 million. The Senate Finance partially restores funding for the Enterprise Zone Grant Program with $650,000 appropriated for the biennium, and capitalizes the 1 million of the Virginia Brownfield Restoration and Economic Development Assistance Fund, so that you could use, or you could access these funds for both purposes. And in Norfolk's case, we've been very successful with the Enterprise Zone Grant Program, and hopefully we'll be able to take full advantage of, of these funding provisions if they're successful in the final session. Moving on to compensation and retirement. The House budget sets up a contingency fund for a 2% salary increase for state-supported local employees. This is effective August 2015. The Senate budget sets up the contingency for 3% salary for state and state-supported local employees. This increase is tended, it shows up on September 1st, 2015 paycheck, which is too much, two months into the fiscal year, so that's something that's going to have to be worked out. Salary increases for teachers, both the House and the Senate surprisingly set up contingency funds to pay for the 1.5% salary increase for teachers, and it also allows school divisions the flexibility to determine their own effective date of the salary increase. Under the underfunded teacher retirement liability, as you know, the Governor proposed making $150 million payment on deferred contributions to the teacher retirement plans, and if this is to move forward, it will actually lower their teacher retirement contribution rate for FY '16. Moving on to elections and administration. Both the House and Senate rejected the Governor's amendment that would have raised 28 million through a revenue bond sale to pay for optical scan voting equipment. This also, if it was pushed forward, would have repaid localities that have already purchased operating equipment. There were also legislative bills to essentially cost push some of the election expenses onto local governments that we were successful in defeating, but there is one bill that's in play that we're watching closely. As it relates to human services, the Comprehensive Services Act for at-risk youth and families, CSA, the Senate included 77,409 to help the Office of Comprehensive Services comply with the Administrative Processes Act, but SB 1054-Hanger has passed the Senate, and now it's on the way to House appropriations. As it relates to Medicaid expansion, I'm sorry to report that both the House and the Senate have removed the language in the introduced budget that would have mandated local governments like ours to pay.
It's a great face. Let me take a picture of that.
Is that right? We can't see.
Just having difficulty figuring out how to pay for it. As it relates to jail per diem, both the House and the Senate included 2.49, 2.5 million more in their budgets to bring their state per diem level up. Are you guys hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, there was a freeze on my screen. So this falls in line with the latest projected amount that was needed for the fiscal year as it relates to jail per diem, so it somewhat fills a little bit of that vacuum. Jail construction reimbursement, the Senate amends the language in the Governor's introduced budget that would have reduced now it's on the way to House appropriations. As it relates to Medicaid expansion, I'm sorry to report that both the House and the Senate have removed the language in the introduced budget that would expand Virginia's Medicaid program pursuant to the Affordable Care Act. So instead, both bodies provide varying amounts of additional assistance for free clinic and community health centers. The Senate does not appear to eliminate the Governor's Access Plan Program that was introduced by Governor McAuliffe in September, and it was slated to help as many as 20,000 individuals with serious mental illness to obtain healthcare, safety net services. The House also created an alternative proposal that, according to the press reports and advocates that I've spoken with, it provides psychiatric services to approximately 30,000 individuals and prescription drug benefits for those individuals who might find themselves in psychiatric facilities. Onto stormwater, as you know, council specifically called out a request for additional state assistance in stormwater. So far, only the Senate has included a $10 million bond revenue appropriation to assist in this effort, but anything helps. We do not like our prospects in the House as far as there being anything more added to this amount, but we will continue to pursue it as a priority initiative, especially given the flooding challenges Hampton Roads and Norfolk is specifically facing. Onto deputy sheriff salary mandates. Both the House and the Senate removed the language from the Governor's introduced budget that would have mandated local governments like ours to- Just having difficulty figuring out how to pay for it. As it relates to jail per diem, both the House and the Senate included 2.49, $2.5 million more in their budgets to bring their state per diem level up. Are you guys hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, there was a freeze on my screen. So, this falls in line with the latest projected amount that was needed for the fiscal year as it relates to jail per diem, so it somewhat fills a little bit of that vacuum. Jail construction reimbursement, the Senate amends the language in the Governor's introduced budget that would have reduced states' reimbursement levels for our regional jails. And unfortunately, chief, we were unsuccessful in getting additional funding for the state assistance to local enforcement, also known as HB 599 funding. It appears that neither the House nor the Senate changes the total funding for the program, but at least the Senate was, reinserted language that it included in the past budget to clarify that the amount distributed to the locality in both 15 and 16 shall be equal to the amount provided in 2014, so that at least gives us some coverage. And we'll be working with conference to hopefully keep that provision intact. Moving on to another public safety, there was a bill that people that would be convicted in general court for violating local traffic ordinance based on photographic traffic light monitoring systems, well, they will now be able to, if this bill passes in the Senate, they'll be able to appeal their convictions to the Circuit Court. We fear here at the local level, just that, you know, there is a significant potential impact of clogging up the Circuit Court docket for just $50 transat and fractions, and we really haven't seen any, to suggest that there was some pressing need in which citizens needed to apply to the circuit level to have their cases reviewed, but nevertheless, we will continue to work to defeat this, this bill in the Senate. As it relates to procurement, and I'm almost done, despite the backing of the two committees, the House defeated legislation Monday that would have prohibited local governments from taking any information about price in the procurement of their professional services. HB 1540-Albo would have driven up the cost of obtaining any number of services, including legal, accounting, pharmacy, medicine, land surveying, engineering, et cetera. Wanted to take the time to make special mention that during Florida debate, our own delegate Chris Dostali was the one who spoke up about the serious fiscal impacts this bill would have on local governments, and he really did an outstanding job advancing Norfolk's strong objections to this particular bill. I want to also say a special thanks to Norfolk's new purchasing agent, Beth Dooley, who's come to Richmond several times this session to help defeat problematic procurement legislation this session. Thanks again, Beth. And let me also take a quick moment to thank my colleagues, George Homewood, Bernard Pischko, Adam Alida, Deb Bun, our Commissioner of Revenue, Evans Poston, and then many other budgets and finance staff who's been helping with determining legislative impacts this session. We've been doing a really good job of turning around these impacts and being able to stop problem legislation before it goes any further. Back to your briefing on local, you know, local government-related issues, there's been a bunch of different redistricting bills that's being considered by both chambers. The one that local governments have been asked to support here at the crossover point is SB 840-Watson. This is a bill that would actually force that recognition of political boundaries, equal population, racial and ethnic fairness, contiguity, compactness, and communities of interest all need to be factors that are considered when considering redistricting the political boundary lines. The bill would essentially put restrictions also on the use of political data and election results in determining what new boundaries should be. Moving on to taxes of finance, there was a bill that requires legislation that has local fiscal, fiscal impacts to be filed by the first day of session. So that got through the Senate 38 to 0, and the genesis of that request, council, is essentially, we kept getting caught off guard with legislative bills being introduced, but no impacts being calculated, and that they're a rock-a-docket to be passed through before we're able to actually calculate what these impacts could be for us. And so, we'll continue to work diligently on this particular bill because we think it's good government to have full disclosure of all the different parameters associated with these legislative changes that are being considered. We also have made absolutely great, astounding, if you will, effort on the aid to locality reversion. The Senate thankfully has restored the full $30 million that's contemplated as a cut. As you recall, council, this reduction roughly translates to about 1.4 million annually to Norfolk if it goes forward as contemplated. So, that means if we're successful, that's an additional 1.4 million that would be available to council to spend on other priorities this coming session. Now, I've talked a bunch, I've got a lot more to say about the HB 1887, the transportation omnibus, but I thought I would stop now to see if council had any particular questions on any of the legislative matters being considered this, this session.
Sure. Hey, Brian, it's Andy Perdige here. If you could go back a second to the, the appeal of the traffic court issues?
Yes, sir.
Can you explain that to me again?
So, right now, when you get a ticket, a red light camera ticket, it's essentially a citation, as I understand it, and you do have the ability to go to court and defend yourself, you have the ability to, you know, have your day in court, but it essentially stops there, that there is no due process beyond general district court as it relates to the red light cameras.
Right.
And so, this legislation essentially says you now have the ability, if you do not agree with the general district court, to petition the Circuit Court. And again, as a trial attorney, councilman, I mean, you can understand clogging up the docket, the Circuit Court docket for a $50 infraction, nobody's advocating for folks to not have their due process, but at the same time, we're trying to, you know, protect the dockets that already, as I understand, are pretty crowded over there in Norfolk.
Okay. Brian, do you want to talk transportation quickly, or are you at the end of your-
Well, we're, we are already, for the most part, I would say, both the House and the Senate has coalesced around the Governor's and Delegate Chris Jones's transportation omnibus. What it means to Hampton Roads specifically is about an additional $70 million for state of good repair and construction district grants. It also means about, as I said earlier, $40 million more for transit funding, and then it incorporates different, different performance schemes that if we're doing a better job in Hampton Roads Transit, for instance, we would have access to more funding availability based on good performance from the previous year.
Okay. Brian, we appreciate all of your good work.
Thank you, mayor.
Can you hear me? So, thanks very much, Brian. That's a great report, and keep the good work up. All right?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Okay. Thank you, council.
Marcus, do you want to make a couple comments about the last agenda item?
Sure. Mayor, council, the, instead of going through the, the presentation, as I said earlier, when you pass the budget each year, I'm to bring you up, update on how we're doing in the current fiscal year. So, I'll just do three quick ones. One, I would call it green, green, yellow. So in terms of where we ended the last fiscal year, June 30, 2014, on a preliminary basis, when we came to council at the retreat in September, on a preliminary basis, we were about $2 million to the good. That's just the, the city's general fund. Now that we closed the books and you had the presentation, the last time that council met here, we actually ended the year at $4 million to the good. So I'd call that from where we've been FY 2014, that's, that's good. In September, council said, let's take the $2 million, and let's apply $1 million to the economic downturn reserve, and $1 million to the risk management reserve. So, we have a floor of $3 million for each one of them, and a ceiling of $5 million. By putting a million in each one of them, you're now at $4 million in, in both of those reserves. You have a third pot, which is the, our 5% reserve, and the council has always been able to be at that 5% reserve. So what does that mean for the, the two additional million dollars? As Brian said, it seems like everybody should be rallying around the Senate's budget as it relates to the aid to locality cut being restored, but that's FY 16. In FY 15, the state already took away the 1.4 million dollars from Norfolk when it comes to the aid to locality cut. So, and on top of that, we lost about $450,000 related to HB 599 funds, as Brian had mentioned. So together, that's almost a $2 million hit, and my recommendation to the council is, could we use that remaining $2 million to offset that, those cuts? Because the way the state would divvy those up, it would hurt the sheriff's office, it would hurt police, it would hurt human services and other constitutional officers. So, so that's where we ended FY 14. FY 15, the mid-year report is that revenue we're tracking about a half percent below the, what our estimate is, but on the expenditure side, we're also tracking about a half a percent, 2% less. So, where we are mid-year is, we're, oh, they're actually putting it up, okay, where we are mid-year is not in bad shape. In terms of, so I had to call that green, too. So in terms of the FY 16 budget back in September, we talked about having this $9 million gap in 16. Right now, there are a series of estimates, revisions, departments coming through with plans, and I won't even call them reduction plans, just reengineering, doing things better. We have that cut in half, maybe closer to $3 to $4 million. So going into the next couple of months, before we present a budget to the council, what we have to deal with is about a, a $3 to $4 million gap, and I will say that I'll, we'll take that any day. Years and years ago, we were talking $20 million gaps and things of that nature. So, that is typically is a 30-minute discussion, which I would say that again, FY 14 ended on a positive note. FY 15, we're tracking, and FY 16, we're very confident that we're gonna present to you a structurally balanced budget in the next couple of months.
You think over schools?
Schools, I'm sorry, good point. Okay, schools. In terms of where they ended for FY 14, they ended with about 3.4 million to the good. So, the recommendation is to allow the school system to use that FY 14 surplus to help balance their FY 16 gap.
We've always done that, forever. We want them to be favorable with their money so that they get the benefit of it. So, Marcus, the, the additional use of the 2 million is, I mean, that seems perfectly appropriate to me, and you never, you never let us spend it anyway, so you might as well just, if we had said no, you'd, they'd have gone away some way since you know that, so. Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, we got about two or three minutes here and done, so. Anything else, Marcus? Is that, is that-
I think that's it.
Okay. All right, then we'll go upstairs and get started, ready, so.
I tell you, Paul, I asked Brett to get council members this book by Dr. Samuel, you put your proctor, as a gift.
Didn't they do something over at the sloper?
I'm not sure. I know they have a, they have a conference here at the, at the Marriott.
They're here now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the conference is here now.